Good morning. I would like to call day number three of the budget workshop to order. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have members of county council online and members in the council chambers. Online are council members Cunningham, Dawson, Flueeling, Hervishan, and McKellen. In the chambers right now are Councilwoman Howard, councilmember Rodman, Somerville, and Passamet. So, we will begin. Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. And would a member of council please offer a motion and second to approve today's agenda?
Just the motion but not the second.
Okay, you will be the motioner.
Second.
And we have it duly motioned and second, and the agenda will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Today, we're going to be doing the public facilities committee, and then the wrap-up, and I'm going to turn it over to our county administrator, Mr. Greenway. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, fellow council members who are both here in attendance and online. This is the third and final day of our retreat. Whether or not we do a wrap-up this afternoon after lunch is entirely up to the chairmans of the various sections, as whether or not you need to summarize, or if we finish early, then we might do that before we get to lunch. But this morning, you're going to hear from probably the division with the most responsibilities and the largest initiatives happening right now. And the reason I say that is because Jared Frelix is handling or managing through his staff airport expansion, 278, pathway projects, one cent sales tax, facilities master plan, all of those big initiatives, a lot of those big initiatives that we're undertaking that are going to be the most costly and time-consuming and the most effort lie in this division here. Jared has done an excellent job managing that. He has a lot of talent, as we do across our workforce here in the county. You will hear from him shortly, and he will take you through various sections of his issues. Also, another big initiative that I failed to mention that I should is the enterprise fund for solid waste and the sustainability campus for solid waste as well. So, before we get into that, we're going to hear from Rob Merchant. He's going to come up and again talk to you all about the comp plan as it relates to the items that we might be going over today. Feel free to ask questions. We have a game plan, but we are also very flexible in what we need to do to adjust to your concerns and directions. So, Whitney Richland has been taking very good notes. We will send those out to you all after the conclusion of the retreat today, so that you all will know kind of what the discussion centered around. We'll get those to you, and if there's any presentations that you all would like to have, we'll send those out to you as well. So, having said that, I'm going to bring up Rob now. He's going to talk you a little bit, and then he'll turn it over to Jared, who will do the video, and then move into his section for the rest of the morning.
Well, good morning. And once again, pleasure to be here. The comprehensive plan, you know, as I had mentioned earlier, is really a, it forges a shared vision for the county and looks at how much we're going to grow. You know, first, it looks at what we value the most in our county, and then recognizes that we're in a very dynamic environment and that we're going to be growing and changing in the future, and what steps do we need to take in order to, you know, keep those things that we treasure and make sure that we're growing into a better place. So fundamentally, one of the main things that the plan does is that we do projections for growth and look at moving that means in terms of our needs and our future road network and public facilities. And so, there's two chapters in the plan that really address these things. One in this is called mobility. That's just a fancy name for transportation. But one of the things that this plan does, I think that it kind of moves more in a direction away from simply looking at transportation as a road issue. I think that we recognize that as we continue to grow, you know, simply looking at road widening is, it's very expensive, and at a certain point, it's limiting, especially given our geography and our bridges. So, this chapter really outlines a strategy to kind of look beyond that, recognizing that we will continue to have to build roads and improve intersections, but in order to, if you can go to the next slide. Oh, is this? Oh, great. I feel, wish I knew this on Wednesday. But that one of the main strategies, in addition to building roads, is diversifying our transportation choices. And so, this chapter looks a lot at other modes of transportation, bicycle and pedestrian, public transportation. We even touch on ferry and water transportation. In addition, one of the things when council will be looking at this on the 11th, this is being adopted with an appendix, which is the bicycle and pedestrian plan. We work with the municipalities and also with Jasper and Hardyville to come up with a plan for a, you know, comprehensive bike and pedestrian plan. And so, that's one component to, you know, making ourselves, I guess, more resilient, you know, as far as our, you know, being able to adopt to transportation needs. So, moving forward, we're hoping to kind of continue to move in that direction. In addition, you know, working at solving transportation issues through improving networks, I think that if you look at the improvements on Ladies Island, that does just that. We're not looking at widening the intersection and making all these, you know, we added a turning lane, but most of the transportation issues will be addressed through improving the network, providing other ways to avoid the intersection, which currently are not available. And the other chapter, I think we've spoken a lot about community facilities during the retreat, but some of the highlights here is, are that when we look at this issue of resilience, this is something that we want to make sure we're planning in the future, identifying those county facilities that are most vulnerable to flooding and sea level rise, and making sure as we build new facilities in the future, that we're building them out of harm's way and we're taking into account projected water levels in the future. And that kind of permeates, I think we spoke about equity, you know, and then also making sure that we're citing facilities in a way that enhances our communities. I think when we look at, you know, Bluffton building a new fire station, a new library, maybe that's not the best example, because I know that we have some issues with that site, but what ways can our county facilities really enhance existing places, you know? And I think that that's kind of an example where you have a public facility and a park and an entrance to a community. But I won't go into great detail, because I think we have a long agenda today, but, you know, I encourage you all to read the plan and, you know, these sections and how they address how we, you know, we deliver our services and provide facilities for the community. So, if there's any questions, so.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move on.
We'll start with the video next. You don't tee that up.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me.
Welcome, council. I'm excited to share with you all the projects and initiatives that we're currently working on and have planned for the upcoming years inside the engineering division, most of which will be run into the public facilities committee. Many of the
Did that close that?
Hey, York.
Hey.
How you doing?
Welcome, council. I'm excited to share with you all the projects and initiatives that we're currently working on and have planned for the upcoming years inside the engineering division, most of which will be run into the public facilities committee. Many of the items set Welcome, council. I'm excited to share with you all the projects and initiatives that we're currently working on and have planned for the upcoming years inside the engineering division, most of which will be run into the public facilities committee. Many of the items set forth in the earlier retreat this year are major tasks that are still ongoing. However, we do have a few new projects to present as well. As a reminder, there are six departments inside the engineering division that include solid waste, public works, capital projects, just Welcome, council. I'm excited to share with you all the projects and initiatives that we're currently working on and have planned for the upcoming years inside the engineering division, most of which will be run into the public facilities committee. Many of the items set forth in the earlier retreat this year are major tasks that are still ongoing. However, we do have a few new projects to present as well. As a reminder, there are six departments inside the engineering division that include solid waste, public works, capital projects, facilities management, transportation, and airports. All of these are huge projects and programs that we are working on inside the engineering division. Along with all the great things going on in the other departments, these things are going to separate Beaufort County from all the rest. I'm excited to be part of the vision setting and strategic planning team, and look forward to the direction that council sets to ensure that Beaufort County is a great place to live, work, and play for not only the next few years, but for many years to come. As mentioned, over this past year, we've been working a lot on really good and important projects. We know these projects are meaningful and will make a difference in our community, but we never took the time to connect the projects and define the why behind all of them. A few months ago, we had that aha moment that explained the why and connected this common thread. Most of the projects were initiated to either improve services, gain efficiencies, or invest resources, but the overlapping theme of the projects were that they were all initiated in a stewardly manner to use the best of our resources available. With that in mind, the concept of a sustainability plan was developed. We have since coordinated with the planning department, and they're leading the effort to develop this holistic plan. If the comprehensive plan is a playbook on what we're going to do over the coming years, then the sustainability plan will be the playbook on how we're going to do the things that we set out in front of us. This plan will reinforce the initiatives that ensure that Beaufort County will remain a great place to live, work, and play. There's no better department that fully embodies the concepts of a sustainability plan than our solid waste department. Our goal is to change the way we view our trash as a county and as a region, such that trash is not a waste product, but a resource. We've made big strides in developing our sustainability concept this year, and are actively working in establishing a suitable site and constructing our material recovery facility. In addition to the campus, we've made some major improvements this year in successfully and fully implementing the decaf system at our convenience centers and converting our solid waste department into an enterprise fund in order to prioritize our efforts. In the public works department, we're making some sweeping changes to our county fleet. Over the years, our fleet has grown in size and age. We're working to right-size our fleets by evaluating our utilization rates and to improve the health of our vehicles by developing a life cycle capital replacement program. As we replace vehicles, we'll be looking at electric vehicle opportunities as well. In addition to electric vehicles, we plan to hire an electric vehicle consultant to plan our needed county charging infrastructure, as well as develop a plan to help ready our entire community for this electric vehicle transition. From the President of the United States to some of the major car manufacturers, electric vehicles are a priority for our nation. The wave is coming, and we intend to be in front of it. In addition to sustainable vehicles, the Stormwater Utility has a host of regional projects that are under development. And lastly, inside public works, I'm glad to inform you that we are 58% complete with the two-to-three-year APWA accreditation process for our public works department. This is the gold standard for public works profession, and there are only three other counties in the state with this designation. The capital projects and facilities management departments are working together to develop a plan of attack to implement the facilities master plan. They are working on a first phase that will include a three-year plan that will prioritize some of the standalone and straightforward projects. Further discussion and input from council will be required to develop a long-term plan of attack to implement the entirety of the master plan. As the projects are initiated, we will look to consolidate departments and buildings to reduce our facility count, as well as design the facilities in a sustainable manner with the most efficient technologies available. Additionally, under capital projects in the budget this year, we added a new position as the capital improvement projects coordinator. This person will work with all departments, and especially the budget and finance departments, to develop a countywide three-year CIP. A staff committee will be developed to rank the project based off council priorities and available funding. As far as transportation goes, this is going to be a pivotal year in planning for our local transportation network improvements for the next 10 years. We have multiple plans and potential funding opportunities that we intend to fit together to ensure that we, the traffic on our roadways don't detract from the place where we live and play. Never in my professional career have I seen a county's comprehensive plan, the NPO long-range plan, and three incredible funding sources of impact fees, sales tax, and a federal infrastructure bill all aligned at the same time. As you've heard me mention before, we have over a billion dollars worth of transportation infrastructure needs over the next 10 years. We have a unique opportunity not only to ensure that we have the right projects identified and prioritized, but that we actually have the funding opportunities available to deliver such an audacious program. I think it goes without saying that the highest priority project for our airports department is the expansion of our terminal facility at the Hilton Head Airport. We have pushed forward this year with the design and permitting of the facility, not knowing fully, but having the utmost confidence that the funding will be in place. Staff has worked tirelessly brainstorming funding ideas to meet the $30 million funding gap. We are resolute in this pursuit and will be bringing funding opportunities for council's consideration in the coming weeks. This year, even through the course of the pandemic, we've had over 250,000 passengers fly through our 18,000-square-foot airport. That's a pretty impressive feat. Our intent is that we'll have the plans for the terminal expansion finished by the first of the next year. We'll have the project bid throughout the spring, and we'll be ready to start construction by the end of summer.
Well, thank you for that. And before I really get started, I just want to say thank you for the comments, Eric. I feel extremely blessed to be in the position that I am as Assistant County Administrator of Engineering. The people that I work with, I have a lot of fun doing what I do, and I hear a lot of people, I know we have a lot of things going on in the engineering division, and it seems like we're super busy, but it's not overbearing, I promise you. And I think, I think it's Confucius, I might be wrong on this, but if you choose a job that you love to do, you're never going to be able to work another day of your life. And I feel like that solely, 100%. And so, again, I just appreciate the opportunity to be here today. So, one thing, as I was thinking about this presentation, that kept coming to mind, and I'm not really sure why, but was my first day of college. Well, actually, not my first day of college. That was a really bad day at Citadel. But my first day of classes at college, which was still another bad day at Citadel. But what comes to mind is my calculus one professor. His name was Dr. Troutman, and he was, he was kind of short, stocky, puffy brown hair, kind of looked like Mario figure, and thick accent, and I can hear him now saying, "My name is Dr. Troutman. Syllabus is on the web. Let's get started." So, with that, no delay, let's get started with what we're going to talk about today. In coordination with the PFC chairman, Councilman Rodman, and also the vice chairman, Councilman Glover, we decided to cover big topics today. So, we have six departments. We're going to cover one topic per department, as well as a couple additional. So, we have eight topics, also mass transit, and then kind of open item there at the end to talk about. So, again, this is, this is going to be a heavyweight boxing contest. We're going to keep punching after we do one. We're going to throw another one at you, so stay tuned. I know this is day three of a long journey. This is the fourth quarter, but we're going to stay strong, and we're going to make sure we, we take it to the house. If we don't, I've got John Rimble here. So, he, I don't know if y'all are aware of this, just ran a 21-minute 5K at the airport here recently, and is definitely in shape. So, if I see you guys start nodding down or not paying attention, he's going to get us up here, leave us in Calisthenics, start doing a little push-ups, jumping jacks, get that heart rate going. Also, John doesn't like, let me tell a quick story about John. I think everybody that has kids realizes when you're playing with your kids and they're young and you're playing a game, you know, you kind of skirt the rules, let them win that game. But then, as they grow up, you're playing that same sports game, and then without knowing it, they beat you, and you're trying. And I think, unfortunately, John's dealing with that. 21 minutes is great, but his son, seventh grader, I believe, was pacing him a little bit harder. So, he's, he's dealing with that, so y'all be easy on John today when he gets up here and talks. So anyhow, like I said, we got eight projects to talk, or eight items to talk about. Thanks to Dr. Troutman, quick calculus, eight projects, two hours, that's 15 minutes, six, so we're going to stay on track with that. Additionally, we're going to stay high level on our end, so five minutes. We're not going to talk a lot. We're going to make sure you guys talk a lot. We're going to give five to 10 minutes for each subject matter. And again, if you don't talk, I'll bring John up here to get you to talk. So, is the presentation available? So, those eight items.
You may not be able to use that there. They may have to
All right.
for you.
Yeah, we should be.
Oh, you're good now.
There we go. Look at there, Eric. Don't doubt over there.
I didn't see Patrick sitting over there.
Eight items. Again, airports, mass transit. We've got Low Country, Regional Transit Authority here to talk, solid waste, facilities master plan, transportation, public works, just electric vehicles, and then the boat landing master plan, and then some time for some opening items at the end. So, John, if you'll come up, as John's coming up, one thing I want you to know is that inside the engineering division and the county at large, we aim high and we dream big. So, you're going to see this throughout the presentations. I tell our crew that we don't ever fail. We just get more educated and gain more experience as we tackle our goals. So, again, you're going to see that big vision starting right off the top with airports and continuing through the day as we, as the other presenter speaks. So, John?
Thanks, Jared. I had no idea that I was going to be dragged through the mud on that 5K finish again, but a shout-out to our HR department. They've got an excellent counseling program. I'm on a 10th step of that, and I'm feeling pretty good about things. So, take it easy on me today. The little guy he was talking about is my 13-year-old Tommy, and he just ran states at a VRC level last weekend. So, he's pretty quick. I mean, I had stiff competition. It was a great race. So, you've got a little bit less than a year to get ready for next year's race. Beginning of October, 5K race. You can walk it, you can run it, you can crawl it, whatever it takes, but just get it done. And then, just a reminder, Jared reminded me when he said that we aim high. The Air Force aims high. The Marine Corps doesn't miss. I just wanted to clarify that. You don't miss. The 10th of November is coming up next week, so don't forget all your favorite Marines out there. That is a bigger national holiday than any other national holiday, so if you're inundated by Facebook by Facebook and things like that, it's because we have to celebrate. So, happy birthday to all the Marines out there. All right, well, let's get into this, talking about the airports. I wanted to make sure the backdrop of our slides showed some of the aircraft that we have coming through our facility. That's a G4 coming through on the private side. So, we talked a little bit about live, work, play, and I know that's kind of the theme of the comprehensive plan and vision 2040. And I wanted to put our vision back up there again so you can see that, but it is pretty audacious, and we do want to become the most desired destination airport in the country. That's a big deal, but we focus everything we do around that vision. And our key words that we're focusing on are up there, too, relevant, modern, and self-sufficient. And those all go back into the envision 2040 as well. But it also talks about economic resilience, you know, and that fits in with the self-sufficiency. We, that's not only a goal, but that's a mandate by the FAA that we need to be economically self-sufficient at the airports. So, we strive for that as well. I mentioned the cooperation in there, and that's extremely important because our airports, both airports, happen to be in multi-jurisdictional areas. So, we've got the city of Beaufort, at Beaufort Executive, as well as Beaufort County, and then at Hilton Head, we've got the town of Hilton Head Island, as well as Beaufort County. So, we're constantly coordinating between different staffs. And it's very important that we get online with them and make sure that we develop the next round of ordinances so that they keep in mind what has to happen, not only on the airport, but outside the airport, because many times, people forget to look outside the fence line. Let's see, we're going to talk about the CIPs a little bit today as well, but a couple just highlights here I want to talk about. Over at Beaufort Executive, really trying to focus on some hangar development out there. And we're probably going to, we're entertaining public-private ventures out there, and potentially some county-funded activities, too, but that will stimulate some growth there. We'll click on through to CIPs. The heartbeat in the background that you see there is an actual tracking slide that we developed, and that is, those are the people going through the terminal. So, you don't need to focus on that, but it shows you kind of the seasonality. That's about a year and a half worth of data. You can see the high points are obviously the summer season. But the CIPs, you're going to see a focus on our runways. So, we talk about live, work, play. We work on the runways, but runways are the, they're the playground. That's, that's our lifeblood. That's the reason we get up every day, that's the reason we come to work. So, you're going to see a focus on rehab and maintenance of our runways. So, that's kind of what we're looking at for the next couple of years. And we're, and we're going to bring the CIPs to public facilities on the 15th, just to get your bind, and then we submit to the FAA with that. And then, over at Beaufort Executive, this is, again, you'll see a focus on the runways out there. So, we've got not only some safety projects to do at both ends of the runways, but the runway itself, just to make sure that we've got that in good shape. It's been a little bit busier out there, so we'll continue to keep that moving right along. Okay, then terminal funding. We talked about this a bit yesterday, so I apologize if some of the information has actually updated this week. That's how dynamic we've been at the airport. But I do want to thank you again for the time yesterday to brief the program and allow Carl to come up and speak as well. We've already started to engage our, our financial consultant right after the meeting. We're on a call with them up in Charlotte, and we're starting to plan out some meetings there to, to arrange the further discussions with the airlines and work on the negotiations for that agreement. But that's a great way to move a very important project forward without necessarily having to wait on entities that we don't control. Now, all of that work can still take place and probably should still take place, but we can continue to move that very important project forward, and that's what we'll do. And then, I talk about some future projects there, and I want to kind of key in on economic development because that ties in with Strategy E4 from Invision 2040. And that talks about putting economic development in the right place, and that's critically important when we talk about the airports. I was just talking with a planner who's working with the town of Hilton Head, it's an outside consultant, and they were interested in looking at a multifamily possibility too close to the airport. And I said, "You absolutely cannot do that." And so, that's somebody with a background in planning who was wanting to put a residential development next to the airport. So, that just means we've got to do economic development, and we've, we've got to look at zoning and land use, compatible land use outside the airport confines, and just make sure that everything ties together properly as the future goes on. That's really all I've got to present today on the slides, I believe, so I will be here for any questions you may have.
Any questions from anyone, whether they're online? Mr. Glover?
Yes, sir. John, I saw when you talk about wetland mitigation on Ladies Island, are you looking at expanding that runway, or is that just something else in the past?
Well, that's a, that's a good question, and...
And I mean, the reason I'm asking the question because there are folks that are kind of concerned about heavy airplanes coming in the Ladies Island area. Is that somewhere, is that why we may be planning for?
No, the wetlands mitigation that we're talking about will enable us to complete some mandated FAA safety projects. And that, that deals with the safety areas at either end of the runway. As you can imagine, over the, over time, the FAA changes standards, you know, improves safety standards.
That's fine.
And so, kind of unfortunately, because of where the airport is located, we do have saltwater wetlands at both ends, so we will have some significant mitigation to do so that we can finish safety projects out there.
Now, I need to say, so I know you're doing it, but don't, don't forget to build out Ladies Island Airport with hammers, et cetera, et cetera. I know you're doing it.
I'm sorry, say that again, sir?
With hammers, I mean, the hangers, not hammers, hangers. Yeah, just continue to work toward bringing those hangers out there.
Yes, sir.
I know you're doing it, but I need to say, that's all.
We had a, we had a meeting yesterday with our consultant team to speak specifically about that, and as we engaged that same financial consultant, we're going to speak with them about how we bring that to fruition, too. We've got a lot of interest out there, so we, and we just finished up a project out there that will free up a little bit of land that was previously used as a, as a septic drain field, a replacement drain field, and we're, we're now on Beaufort-Jasper tour. So, that's going to free up a little bit of development area for us, which would be nice. Thank you.
John, I want to echo to the runway and the runway safety areas. This is important, you're going to hear this, as Eric mentioned, a lot of things that we do, we spend a lot of money, which means we don't have enough money, we've got to prioritize. This is something that's very important to the life of this airport. This airport, obviously, is much different than Hilton Head Airport, but there's a mandate out there by FAA that we have to improve these runway safety areas. In order to do that, we've got to do some improvements on either end, this is not extending. And this has a real big cost. This is a small airport, we get a small amount of funding from the FAA and from the State Aeronautic Commission, but this is a six, eight, $10 million project in mitigation costs that has to be done. If it doesn't get done in a timely manner, the position that we don't want to be in is the FAA says, "Okay, this has to be done, and we can't get past that hurdle because of the permitting requirements," and then they try to shorten the runway. That would be, that would just be a big hit. So, anyhow, these are big numbers, I know that we're going to be talking about today, but just recognize that these are going to be things that we're going to bring to council for consideration and prioritizing, but that's a big number I want to make sure we highlight.
Thanks.
John, just want you to remind Tommy that the men's world record for the 5K is 1236.
I'm going to tell him that.
And we'll be watching his progress. Any others? Okay, John, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, we're going to expect more questions than that moving forward. We'll let you off easy on the first one. We talked a lot about terminals, so I'll give you that pass. All right, the next topic is mass transit, and we have today with us Mary Lou Franzoni, Franzoni, excuse me, Director of the Low Country Regional Transit Authority to talk about mass transit. And even though mass transit, obviously, is not at the county department, it is something that's very important to us. They're a great regional partner. We've had a lot of discussions with them over the past and expect very many discussions in the, in the near future. So, we thought it was fitting and appropriate that they come, tell us what they have on the horizon over the next year and the years to come, as far as mass transit in the area is concerned, so.
Thank you for inviting us to speak to County Council. I do appreciate every opportunity I have to talk about the transportation. I'm just going to do a brief history, I'm going to try to stay within my time limit. The Palmetto Breeze was started as a Beaufort-Jasper Transit Authority in 1978. The original mission was to bring folks from those two counties to Hilton Head to work. That's still a lot, a large part of our mission, but it's now a five-county authority. We were a rural transportation provider all the way until the first grants we received on the urban side in 2017. And that's pretty important because our mission was, was a lot smaller, we brought people to work, that's what we did, we operated in the rural area. And at this point in time, the north of the Broad area is still considered rural, and that's not going to stay that way. And so, that's what I want to say. Now, in Bluffton and Hilton Head, we're considered an urbanized area, a small urbanized area, and we haven't seen the results of the 2020 census, but that may stretch our area really bigger. And what's important about that is we get urban money, and we, and there's more urban money available for transportation. And a case in point is our Hilton Head trolley service. We started the first year, 8,000 riders, 11,000 riders, 15,000 riders. This year, we had 52,000 people rode the trolleys. And that just shows that if you think about every one of those people getting in a car, or maybe two of them getting in a car and going somewhere, it, it's really significant that we can reduce the, the number of cars on the road and improve the safety of our roadways. Here's the four things that I want to talk about. The very first thing is, is a dedicated source of local funds, and I'll just go right into that. So, I, I believe the County Council has heard me talk about our funding, but I want to give a big overall picture of it. As you can see in the top box, that we're now at about $4.5 million. The urban program is lower than the rural program at this time, but there is more money, and we are limited. When there's grants out there, and people will say to me, "Well, you, can you get a grant for that, or maybe you can go out and get a grant for this?" Every grant I get has to have local match money, and we struggle with local match money. I have to go around to every county council, "Please give me the money." You can see on the rural side, this is for this past year. I mean, we did better this year probably than we've, we've done in many years, but different counties, for different reasons, fund us differently. And you can see up there, Allendale County didn't, has not as of yet committed to any funding for this year. They funded us in the past, so they're struggling right now, and so, you can see that $123,000 shortfall on the rural side. Well, I've been here seven years, every year we've had a shortfall. And I'm going to say, if it wasn't for CARES Act coming along, we would have had to quit running service or call an emergency meeting. We got down to very little bit of money left, and it's no place to be for a provider of transportation, a solution for our traffic congestion. So, what I wanted to say was, when you look at robust transit systems like Carda in Charleston, Comet in Columbia, the CAT system in Savannah, Coast in Myrtle Beach, they all have dedicated funding sources. So, therefore, they have a Transportation Enterprise Fund, and it's fed whatever way that can happen. A lot of times, it's sales tax, sometimes it can be property tax, but whatever it is, it funds the transit system, and then we would have the ability to look at a five-year plan or a 10-year plan and know what our funding is as we move forward. We can't grow really fast because we also have to hire employees and get new vehicles and do that kind of thing, but right now, it's hard for us to just keep up with what we've already committed to. And every year at budget time, I go around to try to get funds, and, and it's stressful. The other thing we wanted to talk about was the, was the airport. This year was a really different kind of year, and we've got a lot of requests for transportation to and from the airport. We do an on-demand service, but we don't have a lot of vehicles, and we didn't even come close to getting people to it from the airport. We were asked at some point, maybe in August, from the town of Hilton Head, if we would look at running a service to the airport. And, you know, when I look at that, and you look at the people coming onto Hilton Head, and if they could fly into the airport, which they're doing now, and not rent a car at all, because I think rental cars are going to be in short supply again this next year, this is our opportunity to maybe, you know, develop this and could get on a bus and go to their destination. We have the trolleys running through Hilton Head. How many visitors could come and not even get a car? And, you know, people are looking at how to save money, and so, I think this is such a win. The other thing that is very timely is, I have three of the large green buses that we use in the urban area that got a delay because there was no chips to build them and all that. Well, I just got told the chassis are in, and they're building them, they're going online the end of the month, and I can have luggage racks put in those buses, no additional cost, just retrofit them. It seems like all the pieces are coming together. In addition, speaking with Jared, we've put together an RFP for planning services to have a consultant come in and develop the plans for routes and schedules and bus stops for the airport service. And of course, I'll oversee, you know, what we come up with, but, but we could do that and have it ready for next year. And so, that, to me, is our very next thing to do. So, I've costed out if, if we, if we didn't have the grant funding available, because a lot of times, the grant funding comes later. As you grow, then the money comes after that. So, the total cost to operate that would be around $160,000, it's on the slide. And if we got grant funding, it pays 50% of our operating, so that would be $80,000. Have the vehicles already ready, and I believe we could staff that fairly well for, for next summer. This is part of our master plan that we did when we first got our urban money, to, to look at the whole area. We had consultants come in, and they met with the community and come up with the different plans of, of how we move forward as a urban transit provider. And this concept is very viable, and, and what it is, it's an across-the-bridge connector. And, and what we want to do is get people out of their cars and going onto Hilton Head, and it, we need a park-and-ride lot for that, a park-and-ride lot in Bluffton. I tried to do something with some land under the power lines, and I, I didn't get very far. It's still maybe a possibility, Santee Cooper, I couldn't, I couldn't get anybody to cooperate. The SCDOT, Doug Freight at SCDOT said that they would fund that. I don't know if there's a local match or they'd fund it 100%, but if I found land that the SCDOT would build a park-and-ride lot. So, I need help if we're going to actually do that. But I have a lot of ideas of how to do the circle part, which is kind of the micro-transit, and it's an on-demand service. Pretty much, it wouldn't cut into taxi cabs or even Lyft or Uber, it would be regular workers that would set up a schedule in advance, and when they got over to Hilton Head, which would be another parking area, then we would take them right to their workplace. So, I, I think it would work, we would do a guaranteed ride home, so no one feels like I can't get home if the buses aren't running in the midday. So, so that is one of the things we'd like to do in the next 10 years. We had a retreat, and we had a consultant come in, and he went over our history of who we were all the years and where we're going, and it became very evident to us that we're changing and that we're going to be primarily an urban provider. As Hilton Head and Bluffton expand, there, there's not any ability to build a lot more roads in that area, and we've got to get people to think different modes and different ways of, of transportation. And so, I think our future is that we build a robust public transit in the urbanized And that's it. Anybody have any questions?
Ms. Howard?
Great presentation, and I, I've always wondered why we don't have HOA lanes for the buses on Hilton Head and coming back to northern Beaufort County, because you see them stopped in the traffic, just like everybody else, but maybe that's the, maybe that's a question more for Jared later, but what, do you know yet if northern Beaufort County will be an urban?
I do not know. And, and there was one more thing I forgot, and that is, part of what we also want to do is develop north of the Broad services, and right now, the way it's set up, because we were so rural and we're in Bluffton, is all the drivers that drive in Beaufort take their buses home. This is kind of problematic if somebody's sick, or we need a bus, or we got to go to their houses and get them. And it, it really is not real professional, and we would like, that was the other request, I had some land or some parcel in Beaufort, on 21 would be perfect. There's probably room at Shanklin Road, it's a little far out, meaning that every, if they had to report there, then you have to pay them for their drive time. So, you want to be kind of in the center, but that would really, as a future move, if the county sees any parcel of land, a couple acres, that would really benefit Palmetto Breeze. We would then have all the vehicles parked at that facility, have like an office, and then fence it up and secure it, and so, all our vehicles would be there, and we could manage a whole lot better.
I had one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
I've seen the USCB land, San, San Char, yeah, on one of them, are you coordinating...
On one of them, are you coordinating with TCL and USCB for students that since we've got the split campuses?
The, um, USCB bus is running as a public transit bus. We have a memorandum of understanding with them and so they are carrying the cost of that. It's open to the public and the schedules are published, so TCL could also use it. But we did that with agreement with them. They paid to wrap the bus and, uh, it's working out really well. And we go to all three campuses, so it goes Beaufort, Bluffton, Hilton Head.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, a couple of comments. Thank you for being with us today. Uh, one of the things, when, when we were chatting about the, the high speed or the special lanes, Mary Lou mentioned that in many cities, the, uh, the buses are allowed to use the breakdown lanes and the new bridges are to be designed with breakdown lanes. And so that seems like a, a natural as we go forward. Secondly, um, I wouldn't give up on the park and ride. I think that's Eric, worthy of some discussion about whether we could, because DOT wants to do mass transportation. It affects the multi-counties, it affects the municipalities, everybody. It, it would seem like the parking under the power lines would be the low-hanging fruit unless there's some issues there, because there's an awful lot of that space, I assume.
There's enough space and if anyone could help me with Santee Cooper, that, maybe that would happen. I, I worked on it for six or eight months and, um, couldn't get anybody to talk to me. I was going to go camp in their office, but other, other priorities came up and I moved on.
Well, Eric knows Sam Bennett, who, who-
Yeah, we can, we can make that happen. How, how many parking spots would it take, do you think?
I would take anything I could get, but 100 spots would be great. And it's, what I'm looking at is on Burnt Church Road, north of what used to be, well, it used to be the Piggly Wiggly and then the Bylow, but it's Planet Fitness. Like north of there, there's a big section of power line.
Okay.
Yeah, I think a little bigger than the 100 though.
Well, as big as I can get it, we can use it. And, uh, and part of what SC DOT does when they build that and FTA as well as we light it really well, it's fenced and it has security cameras. So they, they're pretty secure. The doors are open though, so you know, you, but we can video everything that happens.
Yeah, it could even work for some people, let's say contractors that are coming that have to bring their truck, but they could also pick up their, you know, other folks at the same time. Uh, the third point I would make, I thought your comment on the airport transportation piece was interesting, because if, if I think about two of the larger groups, you have the buses from the outlying areas that are typically early in the morning and late in the day. And one of the things we observed this summer was, um, the, the, the big spike in the tourists at the airports were really kind of in the 10 o'clock to 4 o'clock timeframe. So there's actually kind of a nice fit in terms of equipment utilization. And I guess lastly, this is kind of a question for us, but I, I think the, having the more dedicated funding makes some sense, you know? Sometimes in the past, we've taken some things like USCB and TCL and the solid waste and, and made it a flat mill so that it could grow with the, uh, with the population. Now we have to be careful not to have too many items on the tax bill, but this is one that may make some sense. And I, and I think, Eric, I think this is one that lends itself to look at before we get to the budget process and, and not try to sort it out when we get there. But I, however we do it, it does seem to me that it, it may be time to address the permanent funding. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any comments from anybody online? Gerald?
Yes, um, if I might ask, how many buses do you have running Northern Beaufort County currently?
He's asking how many buses you have in Northern Beaufort County running on a daily basis.
We have, um, one commuter bus that comes over and back every day. And I would say we have, um, three other demand response routes that run. And then we have two more that are just, uh, we call them coordinated, but they're, they're on demand, uh, and they go around and take people to dialysis and different things like that. So that would be, uh, six buses that run out of Northern Beaufort.
Did you hear that, Gerald?
It would have been good if we had known this information, say a month or so ago. We just got rid of, uh, four parcels in the lower part of the Northern Beaufort County and, uh, I don't know if, that you might've been able to utilize some of those properties. But that's one under the bridge now.
Your, your can. Mr. Glover?
Yes. Um, any conversation with the, um, state dealing with Honey Island State Park, getting transportation back and forth because of the hurricane and the micro parking space there?
So prior to Hurricane Matthew, we had discussions because they were, um, over full and they didn't want to lose the park revenue. And so we made a plan to do a shuttle service and had it all mapped out and had a driver ready and, um, I think it rained the next three weekends and then, uh, we didn't use it. And so after Matthew took away the parking area, we met again. I went out to Honey Island, I actually saw it when it was, it really in disrepair, it was unbelievable. But we again agreed that we would do the shuttles and, um, they did not call us to do them. But I'm open and willing, I planned a route, we had a place to park. It may be different now. They were going to improve the back road that comes straight into the, uh, lighthouse and, uh, and stage somebody there so other cars couldn't come in. But I'm more than willing, uh, because I have drivers and buses staged in Beaufort, it'd be very easy for us to do that on the weekend.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're doing good on time, so keep on pressing on. The next one is solid waste. So Cindy Carter, she probably the only person, um, in the county that talks trash on a daily basis. Probably more trash than Michael Jordan on the basketball court, I would dare to say. So, but we let her get away with it, so. Anyway, she is going to come, uh, you know what, I didn't realize I'm saying all these sports analysis jokes. I guess that shows how much ESPN I watch. But that's okay, I got Disney stock, so that's good. Um, so she's going to come up, she's going to tell us about the overall vision, some things that we achieved in solid waste that you guys are familiar with and then where we're going. So again, big picture, uh, five minutes, then a lot of discussion, um, and we're aiming high. She's going to hit you right out the gate with the vision, so come on up.
Good morning.
Morning.
I am Cindy Carter. I'd like to update you on solid waste and recycling activities. And our overall vision is to become the most proactive green county in the state of South Carolina. 2021 has been a very busy year and an exciting year for solid waste and recycling. The department became an enterprise fund as of July 1st. We fully implemented the decal system for the convenience centers and we continue to receive calls from other counties and states wanting to copy the program. Uh, I'd like to personally thank our IT department for all that they have done to support this program. Beaufort County was also recognized by Palmetto Pride for our accomplishments dealing with litter control at this year's South Carolina Litter Association Conference and again at the October County Council Meeting. We look forward to many more positive accomplishments to make Beaufort County a better place to live, work and play. And in the words of Steve Martin, "Be so good, they can't ignore you." Uh, we know that costs continue to soar. Beaufort County population is increasing. An October WTOC report indicated the state population increased 10.7%. But Beaufort County's increase was 15.3%. So more people equals more trash. More trash costs the county in pools and tipping fees. So the new decal system is an operational improvement to remove commercial and out-of-county use from the centers. However, it's a temporary solution for cost savings. We want to pay, uh, we continue to pay for the disposal for all the residential solid waste in this county, uh, at the landfill. Even with our current contracts, there will be a CPI increase each year and new contracts are anticipated to be higher. This historical graph that you saw at the last retreat remains an accurate reminder of escalating costs for the department. The dotted line for projected numbers did take a small dip in fiscal year 21, largely in part to the new decal system. Our goal is to continue on the path to reduce costs. Our unaudited full cost disclosure for fiscal year 21 was $8,025,000. Solid waste goals include a zero-waste initiative. This is a very ambitious term. Uh, as we have mentioned in the past, like DOT strives for zero or target zero deaths on the roadway, we strive for zero waste leaving Beaufort County. Let's handle or at least have control over our own waste, the volumes and the costs by turning that waste into a resource. We continue to move forward on locating a site for a sustainability campus to support the zero-waste initiative. We plan to present the Weston and Sampson Sustainability Campus Sighting Study during the November Public Facilities Committee Meeting later this month. Depending on the approval of a site and the waste streams to be included, we anticipate a capital investment plan of between 20 to 30 million dollars with a payback period of three to five years. The timeline vision for solid waste and recycling mirrors portions of the 2040 comprehensive plan and the upcoming solid waste management plan revision. So we've already implemented the decal system in 2021. We continue to have ongoing education and enforcement. Uh, we are getting ready to evaluate the site options for the sustainability campus and we'll call that fiscal year 22. We're going to initiate a compost program in 2022 and, um, construct and operate the MRF, which is a materials recovery facility sized for all county recyclables, residential and commercial, in 2023. We'd like to permit and construct a transfer station or a waste and energy facility by 2025, complete the campus for C and D recycling, tire recycling and household hazardous waste collection facilities in 2025. And we have not lost sight of the fact that we want to continue to evaluate our countywide curb side collection and contracted litter removal services. Any questions?
Questions? I'll start.
Yes, sir.
One of the big things that is proliferating day by day, because we're in the digital era, is electronic waste. Do we have a game plan for dealing with electronic waste, whether they're televisions, computers, audio, visual, any of those?
Right now we have a contract with a contractor that comes out of North Carolina and the events are four times a year. Uh, what we'd like to do, once we get the sustainability campus cited, is to have where citizens could come and bring that any time of the year. And then we would just arrange when that disposal option or recycling option would happen.
Okay. Ms. Howard?
I know we have a very robust volunteer program for litter pickup, but I see you had contracted, what's the plans for contracted litter pickup?
We're looking at an area and we're, we've got a grant that's available to us coming up with Palmetto Pride, where, uh, it's for a litter crew. So the idea is to put another body on the road picking up litter. Um, I've talked with the town of Hilton Head, um, they actually had an RFP out and a contract where they use their landscapers to do routine pickup. And I think it's a, it's a good project. It works. When you go across the bridge, you see less litter in Hilton Head than you do in other parts in the county. And I'm looking at trying to mirror something along those lines.
Great, thank you.
One thing that Councilwoman Howard, is, um, on litter, we have, like you said, a robust volunteer program. Um, and I didn't realize this, um, until here recently, but our volunteers are only allowed to work on the shoulders of the road. So if we have a divided median like 170 or 21, per DOT, they're not allowed to get in there. So another use of the contractor is that they could be permitted to use, they could have the appropriate traffic control and such like that. So right now, um, anytime you see that, like, man, why is there so much litter in the middle of the road? It's because we can't get, you don't have the same amount on the side of the roads.
And, and too, you know, some, some places like Highway 21 are so dangerous for volunteers to, I mean, they do it, but, but there are some places that, um, don't, maybe volunteers shouldn't be there.
That's right. So anyhow, the contractor will play a pivotal role in helping us on that.
Mr. Summer.
I made a suggestion some months ago that we might consider, um, hiring a new, a second litter crew and paying for it with accommodations or hospitality tax. And I'm going to keep pressing that. It hasn't gone anywhere yet, but it's just, it hasn't died either, not with me anyway.
I'd like to consider putting those positions back in the next year's budget as well.
I mean, I know that some of our dear beloved visitors occasionally litter, so.
We, we've got some new educational plans coming up, also tied to Palmetto, uh, Palmetto Pride grants, uh, we're looking forward to.
And it's not just, you know, the individuals who are littering. You know, I live right by 170. It is all the commercial vehicles that aren't tarped. It's all the vehicles, the trash haulers that are going to the landfill that are dropping all of that garbage. Uh, and one of the concerns that we have is there isn't a coordination of picking up the litter before they mow.
Yes, sir.
So they mow and they, that litter is now churned up and spread all over the place. And there is a, um, obviously a problem with the bridge by Okati where there is tremendous litter on that stretch of land. So, uh, yeah, we have a litter problem.
And we will continue to work on our end and coordinate with SC DOT.
Thank you. Um, any other comments?
One more comment.
Ms. Howard, before, and we do have some online, so go ahead, Ms. Howard. And then Brian, you will be next.
Um, I'd like to see us, now that things are settling down, uh, reinstitute the existing ordinances we already have on the bags. And I know that will take a lot of education and enforcement on the municipality's part and our part, but, um, I think, I think it's time. Um, I, I, you know, anyway, that's a, that's an Eric Greenway task, I guess, is to see how we can get there for that. But, um, it, it's time to go back and, and enforce that. That will help. Thank you.
Mr. Fluehle. Uh, you're still on mute.
Right. Uh, thank you. Cindy, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, great. I have two things I'd like to suggest and if you could look into them and, uh, and get back to me. I've had a citizen, a constituent request that at the Shanklin drop-off site for the household garbage, we get, we build some kind of a ramp, um, so that cars can drive up and, and, uh, the, the drop-off is above, um, like a standing height. And so people have to lift their garbage up over to put it in, into the, uh, into the bin. And, um, so I've had somebody suggest we build some kind of a ramp to allow drop-in instead of lift over. And the second thing is, um, what's the plan for the Gate Convenience Center that we closed? And is there any possibility that we could turn that into a recycle-only, uh, facility just to be able to drop off something there? I know we closed it because we didn't want as much traffic, but if we, if we downsize it to just recycling, uh, and, and we had previously a very small facility there, if we could download it to just, downsize it to just recycling, um, it might take a little of the pressure off the rest of the facilities in Northern Beaufort County.
I will be glad to take a look at that. I'm not sure what the current plans are. I know both, um, the Gate and the Pritchardville Centers were part of the master list of available properties, um, but, um, thank you for that feedback.
Thank you. If you would get back to me, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Cindy, you said one intriguing thing about, um-
I've said a lot of intriguing things, Joe.
Volunteers picking up litter. Uh, the group that I belonged to picked up trash from 278, uh, pretty far down 170. We were disbanded because we used to do both sides of the roadway and the median and that became very dangerous. If we were just limited to the sides of the road, would we be able to reestablish our group?
Um, I'll check on that. I know at one point in time that group was, um, told to wait because there was some road construction going on at one time, if, if we're thinking about the same area.
It's the Riverbend Road Warriors.
Oh, Riverbend?
Yeah.
Uh, Riverbend, yeah, they were, they were worried about the, um, the safety mechanism. Uh, let's get with Caroline Jordan and see, uh, and I noticed when- Let's get with Caroline Jordan and see, and I notice when I come in and out of that area, it's very noticeable because Riverbend did such a tremendous job--
Yes.
--that we've asked our litter crew to try to step up a little bit, but they've got a lot of other areas to work on as well, but let's get, I'll get back with you next week on that.
Great, thank you. I would appreciate that. Any other questions? Seeing none. Cindy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Stay in the course. Let me know if you need a breather. If not, we'll go completion. All right. Next one is Facilities Master Plan. So this is something that has started in the facilities management. Mark Rosinell did a great job leading us through that, had Creach involved. They developed a plan over the course of a year and a half, and then since then have presented the plan to council. And then from that, staff is working on recommendations back to you all. So we talked about it a little bit in the video, but we're working on kind of putting a first step. It's a big audacious plan. It's got a lot of funding to it, and that's a big, big part we've got to figure out. However, moving forward, Dave Wilhelm is going to be the point man on that and Capital Projects Director. He's going to coordinate with Mark along the way as well as council and various other inputs, but Dave, if you want to come up and kind of give us a highlight, and we'll take it from there.
Thank you, Jared. How many months do I have to get ready for your rest?
About ten and a half.
I'll be ready. I'll be ready. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to talk about the Facilities Master Plan. I'd like to start off with our vision, and building on the live-work-play theme, the Facility Master Plan focuses on the work element. Our vision is to make Beaufort County the most desirable place to work by building a cost and energy-efficient infrastructure for all county employees. We want to have a nice environment for our employees to work. What is the purpose, one of the goals of the Facility Master Plan? Purpose is to create a long-range plan for the most efficient use of county buildings, and we want to develop prioritized list of projects. I think that's the key element. That's the most important part. Renovating buildings, building new, constructing new buildings is very expensive. We can't, we recognize we can't do them all, all at once, so we're going to be fiscally responsible, be working with the finance department to try to develop a budget, and we're going to look at the current condition of buildings, the current needs, as well as the future needs, and develop a list of priority projects and be presenting that to you. Our goal, we're looking at a 25% reduction in the number of facilities and a 50% reduction in energy usage by 2030. That's a pretty big goal. Jared is always pushing us to aim high, so putting that out there as our goal, and I do think it's achievable. If you think about it, the buildings that we're going to be renovating or replacing are older buildings, very energy-efficient, so just by working through the renovation process and building new buildings, we're going to be able to recognize some savings by putting new, more efficient systems in place, heating, cooling systems, better building envelope. And as far as reducing the facilities, I think we're going to be able to accomplish that by just taking a look at our needs and consolidation. A good example is the Public Works Complex. I think most people are familiar with the Public Works Complex on Shanklin Road. The main building was built in 1974, a very old building, very energy inefficient. We have quite a few staff in that building, but in addition, on that site, we have quite a few other buildings kind of strewn about which house other county staff. We have stormwater, roads and drainage, solid waste and recycling, we're all in different buildings, whether they're kind of older trailers or just kind of lean-to buildings. So what we're looking to do is build a single building that's going to be much more energy-efficient, consolidate, bring all the staff into one building, and by doing that, we're going to be able to reduce the number of facilities that we have to maintain, but also reduce our energy usage. So every one of those old buildings has a heating system maintained, has a roof system maintained. If we eliminate those, we're going to be able to see some pretty substantial improvements. So how are we going to get there? We recognized early on that we need a consultant to help us through this process. We retain the services of Creach and Associates. At the August 19th County Council Meeting, Creach presented their Space Needs Analysis and Facilities Master Plan to council. The Space Needs Analysis and Facilities Master Plan are two separate documents. The Space Needs Analysis is a detailed survey of our current, and more importantly, what our future needs are. We have to make sure we have an accurate, we know accurately where our needs are before we can begin designing our plans for the future. Essentially, the Space Needs Analysis is the framework or building block or foundation for the Master Plan. The Facility Master Plan is presented by Creach, consisted of conceptual designs for both renovation work and new buildings, and also included probable cost estimates for the work. And probable cost estimates is what we're going to be using in our prioritization and our planning process moving forward. As part of future planning, both in renovation of existing buildings as well as in designing new buildings, we're going to put a strong focus on sustainability. Where possible, we're going to try to obtain LEED certification. LEED is basically a rating system that tells you how well you've done in the building design and building construction with regard to sustainability, energy usage. If we can't obtain LEED certification, we will be using LEED guidelines and principles in our design to try to maximize or minimize our energy usage. Staff will be discussing the Space Needs Analysis and Master Plan in more detail at the November Public Facilities Committee meeting in a couple of weeks. We're going to be presenting our draft prioritization list and also looking for acceptance of the Space Needs Analysis. We want to make sure that everybody agrees that this is our starting point before we move forward. So updating, renovating office space and constructing new buildings will create a much better environment for Beaufort County employees as well as for visitors to county buildings. As I said, trying to make Beaufort County the most desirable place to work. It's a great place to work now. If we improve our building environment, it'll make it that much better. So we have a lot of work ahead of us and very excited to get started on this journey.
Excellent. Questions? Mr. Flouellen, we'll go to you first.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Joe. I really appreciate the presentation, David, and I'm wondering, when we talk about needing 25% reduction in facilities and 50% reduction of energy usage in that, how important are we, how much emphasis are we placing on the really, the new trend in work from home or work from other space? Because I think that would really provide us a lot of cost savings eventually, not only in facilities but in energy. If you think about the space that I'm in right now, would be heated whether I'm here or not, and cooled during the summer, and there's very minimal extra energy usage working from another space. I'm wondering how much emphasis we're going to be placing on that, whether we can anticipate that as a, not only a savings tool, but really emphasize it and really utilize it as much as possible.
That is an excellent point, and we will be placing a strong emphasis on that. And that's part of the needs analysis. There are some departments, for example, Public Works, they physically have to show up. You have to be there in a grader, you have to be there in a piece of equipment, but there are other departments that there may be opportunities to work remotely, if not full-time, maybe on a part-time basis. So absolutely, we will be considering that as part of our needs analysis.
Thanks. I think that also can impact our traffic needs in the future, the fewer people on the road.
Yep, very good point.
Yep. The pandemic really taught us a lesson that way. Good point, Brian.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Others? Any other comments? Okay.
Well, I will. Thank you very much. Just a couple things. As you put together your prioritization list, hopefully you'll have Public Works new building at the top of that list.
Maybe at the top, I'm not sure.
Okay. And you can either wait, you can leave us hanging, or you can tell us what the next two or three are, whatever you want to do today.
What would you like to do today?
We can tell where we are.
And York may know what some of those are also, so.
EMS and--
EMS, exactly what they want.
EMS, you refer to MRF. Public Works certainly near the top. A couple of property purchases.
Yes, and the sheriff's--
Sheriff's Office.
So what we're trying to do is, obviously, it's a big plan, it's a lot to swallow, so how can we make it bite-sized? The bite-sized is some that are very important as far as the needs there. If anybody's been to the EMS station headquarters, it's definitely in need. Same thing with Public Works. So those are standalone too. A lot of the discussion was around this actual site and administration building and how that interacts with the judicial and the law enforcement. So those are bigger pieces of the puzzle. We'll be coming to you and talking. We need that feedback from council to solve the whole puzzle. And then basically, once we solve the whole puzzle, or the end state, say, the law enforcement center, the admin building, the big items, then we can back into, back to a future starting point. But there's a couple items, those four in particular, again, the Public Works facility, the EMS headquarters, the MRF building, and the existing downtown sheriff complex that we're actually already working on renovation. Those are the top four as we stand.
So it seems to me that the, what we're looking at kind of falls in two categories. One is the space need, and Brian makes a good point about whether that starts to fold into that as we look over the horizon a little bit. And then I think the other is, as we wrap up the consultant study, you know, are there any places that we want to have some input now? But obviously, I don't think we take anything out of that, but do we want to do any prioritization of which ones? And I think you get into a three- or four-year rolling type of thing that says, okay, each year you've done some, and you start to add some the next year out, because it's pretty hard to look out 20 years. But I think it's a very useful study for what the purposes of identifying what we need.
One of the things I did not hear, but we will have to have that discussion, is because of the population growth in the southern section, that the Beaufort, of the Bluffton Complex is in sore need of additional space.
Yeah, that was part of the Space Needs Assessment. Each department did their look ahead, and there were factors put in there looking, you know, it was a 30-year look ahead for what space is needed in each department, and population growth, and specifically where that is going to be in the county was part of that calculation.
But to your comment, your assessment is, you had looked at the whole need for 30 years, but the timing of that need is, I think that's what you're getting to, is we'll definitely take a look at that and see how it's at.
Great. Any other questions?
Mr. Flouellen. I just want to follow up on what Jim and Rodman alluded to for staff. And staff is going to be looking to council for direction immediately so they can get started. There are some projects that are quote-unquote "almost ready to go," and a really critical need project at this time. And council will have to meet, and I'm hoping that they will present to the Facility Committee pretty soon, so that we can get them some direction, so that they can get started. And one of the main things that they really want to work on first is not necessarily first, but is the public facility building. If we can give them a go-ahead, they can get started with that. Plans already been started, already site work has been determined, the land is not necessarily repurchased because it's already there. So they just need some direction for us, and I hope we can just make that quick decision and allow them to go ahead and get work started.
It's my understanding at the next Public Facilities Committee meeting, that's where we're going to start to lock in as part of our budget process. Okay, these are the priority things that we need now so we can develop the funding sources, the, you know, engineering, the timelines, the deadlines for us to do so. Point well taken.
Right, and there are basically five things that they need us to make a decision on, and hopefully we can make those decisions as quickly as possible so they can go to work, and then we can deal with some of the others later.
And the funding component is obviously a part of that and the budget. The good thing is, to get started, all we need is the initial engineering and design kind of program, and then we can filter in the construction the year after. We won't need that in the first 12 months, obviously. So to get started, it's a smaller financial commitment, but then you set yourself up subsequently.
Right. So I would hope that you would come to the Public Works Committee meeting with the, you know, immediate needs for the engineering studies and that kind of expenditure that we would need with the long-range plan, so that we can say yes.
Absolutely. We'll be prepared, and that's what we plan on having for--
Chairman?
Mr. Chairman. Oh, Mr. McCollum.
Yeah. To expand on your question about the facilities in Bluffton, could the speakers drill down a little bit on that Myrtle Park situation and give me a better and clearer understanding of what they see developing on that existing space there?
So in the Facilities Master Plan, there's a couple of different options. Basically, one option, the first option is to mirror the existing admin building, and then I'm thinking that add admin space is what was called out into the plan, additional admin space that you referred. Then the second component was the judicial space, so like a perfect court and at least another court space. And that was kind of the third building, and that would be either to the right east of the existing facilities or across the driveway to the west of the facilities. We own to the east, but we need to do some fill-in to the detention fine there. We don't own the property to the west of the driveway, so that would be something that has to be further discussed.
Specifically related to the Judicial Center, do you have a vision yet for whether or not that entire second floor that exists now will move into the Judicial Center in its entirety?
We haven't, we don't have any further details beyond the actual study at the moment, but those would be the details that we need to refine as we move forward.
What's the timeframe for that?
That one, again, trying to get a few projects lifted, but that would definitely float towards the top as a priority. So the engineering and the study can start here in the near future, and then we can plan the construction from that point. So sometime this year, we can definitely look into the plan or what we would be doing and define that such that we can start the engineering and design possibly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? David, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. And I just want to reiterate, we're not building Taj Mahals. I think we all recognize that. But we do want an appealing building that fits our needs, something that smells fresh, clean. I don't know if anybody has the same circumstances I do, but when we go somewhere with my wife, we plan our pit stops based off clean restroom. So we want, we want an inviting room, and we'll make sure that it's something that is pleasing not just to the workers but to everybody that uses our facilities, and we aim to do that. Our next item is transportation. Oops, transportation. So as you are aware, there's a lot going on in transportation. We have a lot going on currently and a lot of discussion already about what's in the coming years. So we want to talk about each of that. First, we're going to talk about the existing sales tax to give you a quick update on that. Brittany Fields is our Capital Improvement Projects Coordinator. That is a mouthful to try and say, but that is, she is taking kind of lead on that and coordinating with our program manager, Jennifer Bragg at Bragg Consulting, to help us on those existing projects, so she's going to give us a quick update on that. I'm going to talk about vision and where we're going and where we want to go, and then Andrea Atkinson, our traffic, our transportation director, she's going to talk about implementation, how we're going to take this vision and move it into an action plan. So first, Brittany, if you can come talk about the current sales tax.
Good morning. All right. So the current sales tax that we have is divided between the three projects on the screen. So you have the US 278 corridor, the Ladies Island corridor traffic improvements, and then the sidewalk and multi-use pathways program. Beginning with US 278, we've been working with SC DOT for the last year and a half on the environmental process. We started off with 19 alternatives, we'll step down to six reasonable alternatives, and most recently, the preferred alternative. The public hearing was held July of this year for the preferred alternative, and we are working with SC DOT to respond to the public comments. Those public comments will be incorporated in a final package that is then submitted to the Federal Highway Association for their approval. Once we receive the approval, this will allow us to begin full design and write away documents for the project. Moving on to the Ladies Island corridor traffic improvements, there were nine projects identified in the 2017 Ladies Island corridor traffic study. All of the projects excluding Mayfair Court extension are currently in a various phase of design. We're looking at airport-- in the 2017 Ladies Island corridor traffic study. All of the projects excluding Mayfair Court extension are currently in a various phase of design. We're looking at Airport Frontage Road Phase One and Meadow Brook Drive Extension being planned for bid to construction in the first quarter of next year. And then lastly, and the most fun so far for me, has been the sidewalks and multi-use pathways. A referendum passed with 24 of those and through both a resolution and public engagement, we have whittled that down to eight. All the projects are also in various phases of design with Bluffton Parkway, Bluffton Parkway Pathway and the Reba Road Sidewalk Extension Plan for Construction at the beginning of next year. As of the first quarter of the fiscal year 2022, we have received 118 million, 953,000, $895 of the 120 collection and about half a million dollars worth of interest to date. We are continuing to seek additional funding sources for the program overall and we have pursued 29.8 million dollars. We will know at the end of November whether or not we'll be bringing in a revenue of 26 million dollars for the program. Just as a reminder, all the information is currently up to date on the website. You can go to beaufortcountypenny.com. There you'll find our monthly reports of expenditures, project statuses and any upcoming public meetings. Thank you. Have any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Somerville.
On the Sunset and Miller Drive intersection, is there any certainty on what might happen there?
At the intersection of Sunset.
Sunset and Miller Drive.
We're looking at the roundabout as originally proposed.
They're looking at the roundabout. And there, but there's no timeline.
It's in preliminary design at the moment. We're coordinating with SEDOT.
The, on the referendum, the number of pathways and trails that we put on was greater than the money that we allocated. And it's always, and I recognize some might fall by the wayside, but there's some that were probably a second priority that were still on the thing. So my thought, Mr. Chairman, is that if we're going to do another referendum transportation wise, we may not, we may want to seriously think about getting some more, allocating some money to get some more of those done because it becomes more difficult to pass a referendum if you haven't done some things that we indicated in some form that we might do.
Yes, and all 24 of the pathways are in the comprehensive plan for the bike and pedestrian plan. So we are pursuing additional funds outside of the sales tax for those. We recently did an application to the defense for an infrastructure grant on Laurel Bay, which is though a part of the 24, not a part of the eight that we have pursued. And then most recently, we've got a CDVG Community Development Block Grant for Stewart Point. And any cost savings that we have from the program will continue to move through the 24 altogether.
Now, you indicated that as of, of the end of the quarter, we've gotten 118 plus interest. Does the interest count towards the maximum 120 million that we were scheduled to connect?
It does not. And the interest will be used towards the projects within the program.
Gotcha. So at this point in time, it's pretty safe to say we've now collected all 120 million dollars.
That is correct.
Okay.
We are, on that, we are following up with the Department of Treasury and the Department of Revenue because with that, we have to signal to everybody that, hey, no longer is the tax to be collected. But their statements are a month behind, so we just got that notification that we're at 118 million dollars on November 1st and we put out press release as such. So we're in communication with the state right now to determine that, yes, we have met that 120 and if we have, what's the mechanism and the timeframe to turn off the faucet?
And what happens to the excess funds?
All those, per the state statute on the sales tax, those would be towards the funded process. If there's a short run, which we know there is, they would have to be in the project.
Okay. Okay, very good. Mr. Glover.
I've already said once.
I just want to thank, Brittany was in my neck of the wood last night talking about pathways and I just want to thank her for, for splitting the job and dealing with the very lively crowd.
You're wonderful.
Mr. Summer.
The, if the Miller Drive and Sunset traffic circle proceeds, that still doesn't speak to the intersection of Sunset and 21. Can you put a light there without violating the excess management plan because there's going to be one at Meridian? I mean, that's pretty close.
Yes, so we're currently working through the corridor project as it's, as a whole. The Meridian light is warranted due to the development of White Hall and then we have the SC 802 intersection light. There does need to be a light somewhere in between, whether that is at humans or if that's at Sunset. So right now, at the time, it has not been determined.
But can, but I mean, can you even put one at Sunset without violating the excess management plan on the spacing?
Yes, it means the spacing requirement is as far as the spacing for signals. So it could be allowed right now. It's not warranted based off the need, so even in the design, we'll have it designed as we go through the design if it is, remains as designed. At that, it's available, but there's not a signal at this time. But it would be developed such that if there was a need for a signal, it's just an incident.
But it's not inconsistent with the access man, okay, that was my question, yeah. I know you haven't decided to put one there, but if you did, it wouldn't violate.
Yeah, the spacing is appropriate based off the two others.
And regarding the overall Ladies Island improvements, though the contracts for the access roads and the corridor are running simultaneously, the corridor is going to take a lot longer and the access roads will come first to construction and completion. That is, those access roads are going to be used to alleviate any, any construction congestion that'll happen during the time of the corridor itself.
What do you call on the access road on the?
So Sunset and Miller.
Yeah, the Sunset, Miller, Hazel Farm, Gay Drive. Those are your access roads.
One last question, back at the, at the Ladies Island Middle School, is that, where are we on that project?
We're currently, right now, we are going to be doing our surveying soon. We have agreed that we are going to do that new realignment across the street from Gay Drive. We've worked with the school. One of their concerns is no pedestrian accommodation on Robin Drive. So we have been working with our engineers to get a scope and fee for Robin Drive to include a pedestrian accommodation. And once we settle on that, then we'll go ahead and proceed.
So you're on, you're on surveying on that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right, still more going on transportation. That's where we are today. What I'm going to talk about is where we're going. And if, if trash comes to Cindy, then roads come to me. So I didn't score very well on the SAT, but I did really good on those comparison statements. So, all right, the vision, sorry, clicker. The vision, I had a hard time writing this vision because I couldn't put all that was in my gray brain matter on paper, but I'll give it a whack. So here it is. Provide an exceptional roadway network today that is more prepared, more than prepared for our traffic of tomorrow. So I think somebody, I think it was John O'Toole earlier said in the week that Beaufort County reminds him or someone else, whoever he's referring to, of what Charleston was 30 years ago. And I completely agree with that. I think we're set on a rocket ship, ready to, ready to take off. I feel like that the traffic here today is not bad, but it has the potential to be bad if we don't get ahead of it and be proactive. I have a lot of friends that live in West Ashley and James Island and Somerville and you couldn't pay me to live there. I just, it's a traffic nightmare and I live comfortably far enough away that I can get to Charleston without living in traffic. And I don't want people to say the same thing about Beaufort County. So another way I was trying to envision, I couldn't come up with words to properly say this, and I'm passionate about transportation, so I'm probably going to be walking around and get into it a little bit more. So the best expression that I can think of is I want it to be instantly recognizable when you show up in Beaufort County, you're on a world above as far as our class of roadways. So if you're driving down I-95 headed south, you go across that Savannah River Bridge. As soon as you land in Georgia, you immediately know there's a difference in the roadway. I want that same level of expression to be in Beaufort County. And that is not a slam on DOT. DOT has a great job. They just have a tremendous amount of roads, more so than, than Georgia, our Georgia friends do. So they do a tremendous job, but that's the level of difference that I want. Our roads are in good shape and I want them to be in great shape. And that's not just for our county roads, but this is all roads apart. When we talk about roads and it was mentioned earlier by, by Robin, the master plan, we want to think differently about our roads. A holistic approach, a resiliency approach, a mobility approach. But when I say roads, I'm talking about DOT roads, I'm talking about county roads and I'm talking about municipality roads. My goal is that we have a road system that's so pristine that we don't have one pothole in Beaufort County. And I know that sounds crazy and we can never make that happen, but I mean, that, we're setting the bar high. We're aiming for the moon. If we hit the stars, we're still doing pretty good. So with that, I mentioned this in the video earlier, that it is the perfect timing right now for transportation plan. We've got a lot of plans that are interacting that we're putting the same list of projects together. So first is envision Beaufort, our 10-year comprehensive plan. We took what we saw as 10 years worth of road projects and stuffed them in the back end of that plan. So if you read through that list, they're all there. The second is our regional partners, LATS. So LATS is currently working on their five-year update to their long-range 2040 transportation plan. This, they're looking at Jasper County, Beaufort County, everything. So they're looking at major arteries. Again, we provide them all of our data and say, these are the roads that we think are important, please incorporate into your plan. And they have done so. The thirdly is impact fees. We have an existing impact fee, but transportation impact fees are tied to a CIP schedule. So we have taken the existing impact fee, carried those forwards, what projects have we not completed, what projects are of interest that weren't on that and compiled that list. These are not three independent lists. These are the same roads on every project. It just gets layered and layered and layered. We're building a cake here and we're about ready to, to cut the knife and scoop it out and eat it. Impact fees, this is another, or excuse me, just said impact fees, the three-year CIP. So this is a more refined approach of our direct three years. So we've got a 10-year plan in the CIP, but this is what we're going to do over the next budget season, three budget seasons. And then lastly is sales tax. So we talked about a 22 sales tax. If that's the opinion and that's where we hit, then great. But again, these are not going to be new roads. You're not going to see these for the first time, the 170s of the world. These are the roads that are going to be on this list and are already there. So anyways, we are moving ahead. Secondly, is how are we going to fund this? So you've heard me say this before, a billion dollars over 10 years. That is a huge number. I get it. But listen, let me, let me try to explain yesterday. Yesterday, we talked about ARPA. ARPA is 1.9 trillion, trillion with a T. So that is 1,000 billion. That is a massive number, incomprehensible. But let's compare it, back in the 90s, we were talking, oh, we've got an infrastructure plan, 900 million dollars, millions. And then in 2000s, we had recession, 2007, 2008, so we put out another infrastructure. We said, oh, we're going to do 500 billion dollars worth of infrastructure. B, that's billion. Now, 2020, we say the word trillion, T with a T. Who knows what my kids and grandkids are saying? I don't even know what's next here. What's the after trillion? I think it's quite brilliant, quite brilliant. I don't know how many zeros that has, a lot of zeros. So what I'm getting to is we're in a world where trillion is the new million, or billion, and billion is the new million. So billion dollars up here sounds really scary, but it's really not. Secondly, I realize that we're not playing the same game that the Feds are. They've got money printing press. We don't have that level. We're tied to our income tax and property tax and sales tax, not income tax, excuse me. But, so we have, we, we're physically constrained, not like the Feds. However, they are playing that game. And if we're going to be successful, we have to play the same game, i.e. spin, or we're going to get pushed off the court. So sitting around and say, you know what, that sounds like a good plan, but I'm not sure, that's a lot of money. Well, somebody else is going to stick their hand up and grab that money. One thing I didn't mention is the infrastructure bill. So as you see there, these are different funds. So the 500 million dollars in sales tax, so we're taking in about 50 million dollars a year. We had a four-year program, we said 30 million, we're taking in 50 million. That's a great, great problem to have. Wish we had the leg for a million so we could do our fast ways, but we'll get past it. Anyhow, so if we did 10 million, that's 500 million dollars. That sounds like a lot of money, but that's still not a billion. How are we going to get to a billion? This is how. So our current sales tax, so we have three projects. We've got an 80 million dollar bridge on there, or excuse me, we have 80 million dollars of a bridge on there. We knew when we did sales tax that 80 million dollars was not going to cover a 278 bridge. But we said, let's put it on there, we're committed. It got approved by a large majority that people support the idea of moving this bridge. So then we say, hey, DOT, we got this bridge idea, what do you think about? And they said, you know what, that's a good idea. So they said, how about we give you 40, or 40 million dollars? So now we've got 80 million dollars plus their 20 or 40, so we've got 120 million dollars. Still not, but halfway to our 240 million dollar bridge. Then we say, you know what, let's hang this carrot up in front of Mr. Sip. Mr. Sip, what can you do for us? And they said, you know what, that's a great project you got down there. That'll be a great initiative for our state. So they said, all right, I'll match you 50/50 and I'll come up with 120 million. And now we've got 240 million dollars. But we didn't start with 240 million dollars. Then, all right, Mr. Troutman will be proud of me, Professor Troutman, so I'll do a little bit of math, just trust me on this math, hang with it, don't worry about it, I did the math already. So we got the sales tax and it's 120 million dollars. We got 80 million towards the bridge. I'm told that 70% of the sales tax that we take in is from out-of-towners. So if you go with that belief and their data, that's what I'm just told, that's actually real. So if you go with that, that means 30% is actually what we come out and talk with. So 30% of 80 million dollars is 24 million dollars. 24 million dollars out of 240 million dollars is 10%. So if you had somebody tell you, hey, I got this deal, I'll give you 9 dollars and you put in 1 dollar, that's a no brainer. That's exactly where we need to be. However, it did not start like that. It started as a concept that we came up with, hey, we need to replace our bridges. DOT wasn't knocking on the door and giving us 40 million dollars. Sip wasn't knocking on the door. We started with the concept and said, hey, look here, we have an idea. But in order to be successful, we've got to put ourselves out there. We've got to plow the dirt a little bit. We got to do step one, step two and step three. All of this on the hocus pocus that we're going to be successful. And that's, that's a scary place to be. But that's where we live, everybody up here in infrastructure, in the engineering division, we move forward. We just talked about the facilities master plan. I don't know how we're going to do 300 million dollars, but we're going to start with 15 million dollars. And I don't know where we're going to get 15 million dollars from, but we're going to start with 1.5 million dollars so we can get started on the design. That's how infrastructure works and that's how transportation's going to work. So again, back to transportation, so 500 million dollars, that doesn't cover a billion dollars. But what it does is say that we're committed, this is important to us local, we go find our friends at the state, we go find our friends at the feds and say, hey, help us build our dream. And they love investing in a story like that. So the billion dollar, this Beaufort billion that you heard of, is not, is not something we're voting on. This is a concept that we've come up with and it's an actual feasible place that we can get to. We've got impact fees, that helps, that helps us get going. We have geobond capacity. We have the federal infrastructure bill not listed as CTC and tag funds. All those are applicable sources, but none of them by themselves are enough. But what we have is a concept. And that, if, if we move forward with that concept, we can be successful to ensure that not today and not in 30 years are we ever going to look like James Island or Somerville or North Charleston in a traffic that they're living in.
Or Mount Pleasant.
Or Mount Pleasant, like, exactly. We want to maintain what we have. What we have today is great in Beaufort County. The way we live, work, play, the way we drive to work, the way we drive to, to go play on, on our waterways, and we want to preserve that. The way we preserve that is by acting today with a plan, moving forward and then implementing the plan. And that's how we're going to be successful. So I know that's a lot of me talking and I'm a big idea guy, that's just what I do. I get told all the time, I get told a lot of no's, but I'm okay with that because again, no is not a failure. In my mind, it's just the next step to get into a yes. And that's where we're headed. So with that, Andrew, if you can come tell us how we're going to take this vision and start implementing, with or without funding, we're going to start implementing. So come tell us about that.
Thank you, Jared. And morning, council. And Jared, I, what you just said about you're okay with no, I've been working with you for a couple of years now.
It doesn't rest easy.
That is not true. He doesn't take no for an answer. But, so I'm going to talk a little bit about, about implementation. And to be successful at implementing, and again, to quote Jared, the audacious transportation infrastructure program that we are about to join in on, we, we've got to build a team of the very best consultants and engineers. They will become a, an extension of our engineering department, an extension of our engineering They will become a, an extension of our engineering department, an extension of our engineering staff. And to that end, our first priority will be to hire a program management consultant. This is very similar to what Brittany explained, what we're doing on the 2018 Penny Program, and it has proven to be very successful. This, this program management consultant would do such services and help our department out with project management, scheduling, estimating, budgeting, value engineering, design and constructability reviews, helping with public outreach, permitting, grant opportunities, and agency coordination. In addition to that, our vision is that this program management consultant would help us solicit our on-call consultants. And as you can see here, we have an idea to have four categories of on-call consultants. They would be design and engineering, construction, engineering and inspection, right-of-way agents, and traffic engineering. The number in parentheses is our, our idea of how many of these vendors and consultants that we would want to have in each grouping. Now, what this does for us by having multiple consultants and engineers is, is really three keys. Number one, a diversity of having different firms to work with. And it also brings into the competitiveness when we have a project come up and, and we work with these consultants, and, and it keeps competitiveness in. Secondly, it, it prevents us from overloading an individual engineer or consultant. They have a certain bandwidth in their office for, for projects they can work on, and we would fit it depending on our needs for the program to be done. And third, and I think one of the most important things about having multiple vendors, is it helps us match the specific jobs with the strengths of the consultants that we have. So those are the, those are the three, three main reasons for having multiple on-call consultants. So where are we now? We have advertised for traffic engineering, that is in process. And we had a great turnout. We had, I believe, 11 respondents to our solicitation, all very highly qualified. Lot of locals, lot of nationals, great interest, very encouraging. We went through the evaluation process, and we have three of them really rose to the top. And next week, we're going to sit down, start talking to them about scope of services already and their fee proposals. Secondly, under, we're, we're in the, in the process of publishing our advertisement to advertise for our program management consultant. That should go out next week, probably come in the end of December. Our goal on both traffic engineering and getting a program management consultant onboard is the first quarter of 2022, maybe the end of the first quarter, beginning of the second quarter. So we are confident that this plan, as we have laid out here, getting a team of the very best consultants and engineers to be part of our team, will bring us to the point where we can implement, we can implement and be successful at the plans that Jared has laid out.
Questions?
What about all these other 533 on the slide? I mean, you said traffic engineering, you interviewed 11, you've got, you've got three. What about right-of-way agent, construction, engineering inspection, engineering and design?
So we are going to, when the program management consultant is onboard, we are going to, probably one of the first duties we have them work on is to help us put the solicitation together for comprehensive services from the engineering and design, construction, engineering inspection, and right-of-way agent. So we're going to, we're going to hold those kind of off to the side and have our, our management consultant help us with that.
What do those parenthetical numbers mean if you haven't interviewed anybody yet?
So if we, if we, if, if history repeats itself, and, and we think it will, where we're getting eight, nine, 10, 11 people responding to, to these, then our goal would be to, in the design and engineering, is to bring five consultants onboard. And, and we hope that, you know, we get, we continue to get the participation and the interest from the consultants to, to turn in. But with, with the program that we have, it is there.
The interest is already there. They, they've heard us talk over the last year, so we get tons of people interested.
Ms. Howard?
You've probably already thought about this, but thinking regionally and consolidation, I hope the municipalities can participate once you hire, if they want to, especially some of the smaller municipalities, so that they can utilize this too. I mean, it's a great, great idea, and, and it's so necessary to, I mean, we, we all have experienced in the, the frustration as far as traffic and transportation, just dealing with all the bureaucracy, and to have consultants to come do that with you and help you will be great.
Absolutely. The idea of having on-call is we don't have to come back to council every time a project. And then also coordinate with our municipality friends that they can, we pick it back off theirs before, and they pick it back off ours, as long as it meets the standards on the.
And they can pay, pay as they go, maybe, yeah, hopefully. Okay, thanks.
Any others?
Just on Jared's private, prior slide, you may not want this one to public too much, but I think you, you're doing something now, and there always going to be one or two of these, which are kind of in the back of your mind, is a potential SIB project. And, you know, the 170 piece seems to be starting to rise to that level where we can coordinate with Jasper, look at, we know it's a failing highway, and we know we have to do it. And so the sooner we get started on the engineering, the more competitive we're going to be to perhaps go to the state and get some money. So you're always going to have, have one or two of those in your back pocket, I think.
Yeah, absolutely. They, they play an important role, obviously. They, they came 50/50 on our bridge project, so they're going to be an important team. And SIB, just to verify as frame of reference, it's a direct allocation from the State House through the Department of Commerce, and they say, Commerce, go inject this into the continent. So that's what SIB does. So that just gives you another wherewithal to know what they thought about our 278 project.
Mr. Glover?
Yes, Jared, I appreciate the comments you made about the problems that are happening in the Charleston area. Dana Beach who lives up there warned us about that several years ago to make sure, if nothing else, that we plan for transportation, moving people around. So I commend you for moving ahead with that, because that's a warning that he gave, and I guess he, he's living that right now.
Yep. Well, thank you for that. And a plan is great, but until you, until you implement, a plan is just a plan, so, but I appreciate that.
Anyone else online? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Chairman.
We have two more things, two more punches to throw at you. If you want us to do that now, we can, we can get through them, I think. They're not quite as big as.
Yeah, I think we can do through it.
All right, we're going to carry on. So Public Works Department, they're one of the biggest departments in the engineering division. They include several sub-departments, so stormwater, roads and drainage, traffic ops, fleet maintenance, grounds maintenance, general support, and disaster recovery. There's a lot of, I had to memorize that. So however, we don't have time to talk about it. There's a lot of things going on, great. So we picked one shiny object that we thought would be worthwhile to share with y'all today, and that is electric vehicles. So Neil DeSai, Public Works Director here, and he's going to tell us where we are on that venture.
Thank you, Jared.
Good morning, council members. So real quick, what's the vision of this project? The vision is become the first county in South Carolina to convert to electric fleets. To give you all a brief timeline of how we got here, was back in late spring, early summer, Jared had tasked me to start to do some research on electric vehicles. And one of the things that I quickly noticed that EVs was not just a growing fad, but it was more of an emerging trend. As close as the city of Charlotte is converting to electric vehicles and doing on a rapid, rapid basis. The other thing that I started to peel back, as I was peeling back the onion, so to say, it was quickly determined that there are many complex elements and many different layers in this, particularly with the vehicles, but also the infrastructure aspect. An expert's going to be needed to bring in to kind of help with this conversion, if the county was going to go into the conversion of electric vehicles. With that being said, a RFQ was kind of created with a scope of work. That was created, had some peer review internally, then that was then advertised towards the end of July. The valuation team then shortlisted three firms in mid-September, and then they were brought in for interviews around mid-October. Currently, the valuation team is looking at the price structure and kind of the scope of work to review that. The goal is to kind of bring that up to the next vote facility meeting in the next couple weeks. One of the things to consider about this project is that this is a great opportunity for us to coordinate with a lot of external partners, where the county can continue to kind of thrive and kind of also cultivate its live-work-play initiative. One of the things to note is just this week, I had two separate conversations, one with Palmetto Electric, and they seemed to be very much onboard and kind of started to have some initial discussions. The other ones was Mary Lou with Palmetto Breeze and having a discussion with her separately, particularly about buses and things of that nature. Next slide, just quickly, the picture on the left, the pickup truck is the new Ford Lightning F-150, just some initial conversations with some Ford dealers. Looks like they're going to be a commercial or kind of a heavy-duty type vehicle that's going to be out for that Public Works could kind of utilize. The other three pictures is one of our current electric vehicles, our only one right now in our fleet. It's right now housed with Cindy in her department, but it's a Chevrolet Bolt. With that being said, I'll send in my brief, and I'm here to answer any questions. I know I'm, I'm in between you guys and lunch, so.
It's very apropos, because, you know, there is a federal initiative for electric vehicles, so there will be money as part of the infrastructure bill, should that ever come about.
Yes, sir.
But that certainly is, you know, something that we would want to take advantage of. Any other questions?
The first bullet, you said, begin.
Hang on for a second, go ahead.
The first bullet, you said, begin in May. I think you, you meant began. You already started last May, right? It's not next May.
I started in this May.
Last May, not next May.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Second thing is, you said Palmetto is onboard, what, what does that mean?
So Palmetto Electric is one of the energy providers here in the Low Country, the other one being Dominion. You know, the initial discussions with them is they're looking to partner with us, public-private partnership for infrastructure and how we can do some of that. The next goal is to probably, obviously, talk to Dominion, because they're mostly north of the Broad, but that, those discussions have started.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yeah, I don't know how to say this politely or to sound too brash, but my biggest question is why is this our angle to go electric? I mean, we can have discussions, green, not green, but my, my question is, how much is it going to cost us to build the infrastructure, maintain these vehicles, for a superficial green look?
I can answer that. So superficial is, is not the appropriate word, because green is, one, it, it helps with our sustainability thought process, but there is, there's been studies out there as far as cost savings.
Jared, I'm sorry, but I can barely hear you, not by that mic, I'm sorry.
Yep, sorry about that. So there has been studies out there as far as the life cycle. Again, we talked about the life cycle in our fleet conversion. When we look at electric vehicles, we're already buying vehicles, new vehicles, so we're just talking about the difference between the electric and the new. So not the entire cost is the burden that we're talking about. Then we're looking at that over the life cycle, so no gas, the cost of electricity, so you got that delta, then the cost of repairs, equipment, maintenance and repairs, all those combined, and also the lifespan of the vehicle. So right now, whether it's a four-year vehicle, but this might last six years, because again, less parts in an electric vehicle. So it's not just superficial that it looks green, it actually is been studied that there is cost savings. We want to roll it out and, and explore it ourselves, touch and feel it and make sure that is accurate, but that's part of the intent as well.
So then, from my understanding, it's not necessarily about the electricity, but just the lower cost for use in the county?
Yeah. I don't know exactly if it's going to be lower or equal then, but I think, I think it's a cost that is right there to be evaluated. And then again, it goes back to the sustainable nature and less of a footprint on our pristine environment.
Thank you.
Mr. Rudden?
I'll be very interested as this goes forward to see which vehicles emerge as the best one, but just off the top of my head, it strikes me that the sheriff's patrol cars would be a good one, because you have the high acceleration, the lower maintenance, they generally sleep overnight in the same place, so you could charge them all at one place. So I'll see how that works out, but it does strike me off the top of my head, that might be a good one.
We don't disagree. We think that'd be an excellent source. We haven't had much participation with sheriff yet. They, they didn't, we asked them to join us on the study, but we're hopeful that they'll join us as we start implementing. There are law enforcement groups throughout the world, or throughout the nation, that are, are implementing, and they do, they do meet that need. They have a good acceleration and takeoff, so we're hopeful that that's a possible ability for us.
Any final questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Hervishan.
Thank you. So in, in the spirit of this being a budget workshop, just off the top of my head, what I would like to see council see as we kind of go down this rabbit hole is the incremental cost of the vehicles, the incremental cost of the infrastructure, the offsets of any grants or rewards that we get from going to a green-type infrastructure, the cost of the infrastructure, like the entire county to participate in the study as opposed to just administration, so just to borrow out the sheriff, I think that's a good one as well. And then also, I'd like to, I'd be interested to know if natural gas was an option as well, something that's a little bit cleaner, potentially a little bit less expensive, and then also the incremental cost of electricity versus, versus gas, and how that interplays with longevity of these vehicles and cost savings over the course of that longevity. But those are just my thoughts on this. Thank you.
In general, you want all the costs.
Yep.
Got it.
Exactly right.
We got it.
Not surprising.
We don't have that today. Again, our consultant's going to help us, they're going to be the ones with the data, both locally and nationally, and they're going to help provide all that. So that's the intent of having the consultant.
Yeah, I appreciate that. The nuts and bolts of it are what is the incremental cost or savings to the average taxpayer, and how do we communicate that? And just making sure that we flush out all the details so that we know not just what's the incremental on the front end, but over the lifespan, what does it mean to the average taxpayer from a dollar perspective?
Absolutely. We'll get that information as we progress with the, with the program.
Okay.
All right, got one more punch. It's about 10 minutes. You're still good for it?
Yep.
All right, here we go. This one's one, I know transportation got me fired up a little bit, but this one I'm really excited about, too. This one, unlight transportation and unlight solid waste, or even electric vehicles, I think this is something that is hard to be opposed to, and this is our boat landings. So we've got a lot of great things planned, and as you see here, can anybody tell me which one this one is?
Lady's Hall.
Whitehall? I think I heard somebody say Whitehall, yeah, this is a Whitehall part.
Factory Creek.
Factory Creek, that's right. So trying to write our vision, Mark, Mark Rosenau, this is what he's leading this effort. He's not feeling well today, so I am, I am standing in, DHing for him. So the vision is enhance the Low Country experience by providing exceptional access to our waterways. Again, this was a little hard to put in words, and, and my pea brain, I try to, try to make sense out of things. So the way I, I thought about it is, when you go to a nice restaurant, you sit down, they bring you the bread, you start eating, and then right before the entree comes, that, that server, that host comes with a, whether he has the white cloth on or not, he comes with that, I'm not sure what it's called, the breadcrumb scooper?
Yeah.
Yeah, and he comes and gets those breadcrumbs right for you. You don't, it doesn't matter what you ordered, but when somebody comes with a bread scooper, you know that the next meal is going to be pretty fantastic. And that's exactly how I feel about our boat ramps. This is the, this is the feast right before the good stuff, right before you get on that water, this is the experience that you feel. And we want this experience to be like no other. And I think we've done that already with our Whitehall. This is the standard, and that's what we're marching to. So to tell you where we are, so we had this concept and advertisement, we put it out in September, I believe. We've received three proposals and have since awarded this master plan study to Creach and Associates, their team with JGT, who is a marine consultant. We established this in October. We established this in October. Creech, as you're aware, is the same group that did the facilities master plan. So we've got a level of comfort with them, and they provide a good work, work product. So we're, we're really excited about that. So what are we going to get out of this master plan? First, they're going to do an assessment of the existing conditions of all the facilities. Secondly, they're going to perform the economic impact county boat landing, so Councilman Herbeshan, they're going to have some numbers in there for you. Then we're going to analyze the current inventory and spacing. So we have 28, is that the right number? Do we need 38? Do we need 18? They're going to tell us that. Are they too closely spaced together? Should we look at different properties? They're going to take a look at all of that. Next, they're going to provide recommendations for improvement, so they looked at it, they know what the industry is, they know what our standard is, and they're going to provide us with those recommendations for each and every boat landing. And Ms. Howard, this is includes the ones, the sands and the ones that are under question right now. Those are all included in the scope. We'll figure out the, the long-term ownership separate, but they're, they're going to be analyzed. And then lastly, they're going to develop a capital improvement plan out of this. I am not going to lie, this capital improvement plan is going to be expensive. If I was there to put a guess and a mark on the wall, I'm going to go ahead and save a $50 million plan or more. And the reason is because Whitehall, as we are well aware, is if that's our model, and I think we can all, that's, that's top shelf, then it had a high cost. It came in at cost a little over $1.5 million. But out of that, it also had a couple neat functions. It had stormwater, we talked about resiliency and, and stormwater, so it had underground attention in there. The pile guide system was really important. We also want to make sure sustainability and long-term, we're not coming back and fixing this next month when the contractor leaves. So it has a 75-year expected service life and then is environmental friendly. So of course, that makes a lot of sense. But no better way to express this and what this is going to look like than a little bit of a video. So let's see if this video plays. Oh, gosh. Have confidence.
I'm just wondering if you have me? Okay, all right, good.
We've got it, so just sing a song in your head.
I will admit, when I started to try to back up the trailer, it started to go sideways, just a little bit.
Try it one more time. If it doesn't work, we'll.
Beautiful.
So just imagine the boat landing that's closest to your house that you put in, and unless you live on Factory Creek, I can guarantee it doesn't look like that. But what if it did? How awesome would that be? How proud would you be of your boat landings that you and every member that lives in the county could come and use that, even the out-of-counters, something to brag about? And I know we're running short on time, so I'll just leave one last thought that I had. Well, two thoughts. First, there's not a funding source for this. $50 million does not exist. $1 million does not exist for boat landings. Right now, we put in about $150,000 in boat landing maintenance for all 28 boat landings per year in the general fund budget. That is it. The only improvements that we've done, including Whitehall, are from H-Tax. And H-Tax is great, but it doesn't cover $50 million. So if this is a priority, and this is my final statement, and I'll quit talking today. I've heard a preacher say this before at a sermon, is I can tell you exactly what your priorities are if you show me your checkbook register. And I say that just to say that we've talked about a lot of things today, and a lot of things have a major cost, and I don't envy any of you at all to sit in your seat because there's some major decisions that have to be made over what gets prioritized and what gets funded. But there's a lot of great things, not that we presented, but that's been presented over the whole week, that deserve merit and deserve recognition and deserve funding. But I think you guys have a chance to really knock it out the park and really make a big impact, not on today, like somebody said about planting a tree and shade for later. I think y'all are uniquely positioned for that, and I applaud you for all your efforts.
Mr. Flou.
Thank you. Jared, I'm glad you brought up boat landings because I have a burning question, since I went to Factory Creek Boat Landing a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of months now. It seems when I drive by there, there's always a big sailboat parked at that dock. I don't think that's proper usage. Do we have rules regarding the usage of that and how are they enforced? Who do I call when we see somebody parked overnight or for a week or actually for almost a month?
Yep. There are rules at each, each park, and Neil can probably speak to that. So Public Works is the one that's over the maintenance and management of those, and so Neil would probably be the person to call, but Neil, you can probably add to that.
Yeah, so Councilman Flou, there are ordinances in place that are in, already in place and on the books, so to say. Basically, we work with DNR because those are waters of the state. And so we work with DNR when there's an abandoned vessel and things of that nature. The partnership has been great. They do the ticketing process, and there's a formal process to ticket him, notify the owners, and then we assist with actually physically removing the vessel out from the water, and they take care of the dispossessment, we take it, to get it properly disposed of.
Appreciate it. Thank you. So I'll give you a call, Neil, when I see it.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Can I make a wrap-up question?
Mr. Robyn.
A couple things. When we talk about live, work, and play, and when Jared and I talked about is live, work, play, and invest, and as I've listened to our conversations today, certainly there's some things that are driven by need, which comes down to the roads piece. There's certain other things that are driven by paybacks, and so I was delighted to see the solid waste piece focusing on paybacks. Clearly, there's a stream of money coming at us from the state and from the feds that we'd be foolish not to try to get our fair share of that. One of the underlying factors that you've clearly covered on is that we need to be shovel-ready, so to some extent, in order to participate in those things, we're going to have to spend some money in order to be eligible for some much, much bigger number later on. And, and we just want to be smart about how we do things. I think there's chances to tag along. I'm delighted with the way the airport funding is starting to roll out, and I think we, you know, if we go down that path, we've had this conversation with John, but the, clearly we, we've got to proceed as quickly as we can on the, the basic piece, but we also need to, we've been pleasantly surprised by the amount of traffic that just showed up almost unexpectedly. And so we've got to look a little bit beyond, and if there's some pieces we need to add to it on the, on the, in parallel, you know, that'll be fine. And I think another underlying piece that Jared identified very early on, we have, construction costs are rising much faster than inflation. Interest borrowing costs are low, so we should not be bashful about stepping out and, and borrowing. So for example, I think Whitney's looking at for us the, you know, not, not necessarily what our borrowing capacity is, but how much could we actually do now under our current millage? And there may be 10, 20, 30, 40 million that makes some sense to step out on. Now, that could be some of the funding for the investment side, but.
My takeaway, Mr. Chairman, on this is it's live, work, play, and then in big numbers, invest from a public facility standpoint. Great presentation, and by the way, I think on your last slide, I think you may want to add the cyber center to that since we've been talking to other people about that.
So I would take it that we will not need a wrap-up after?
If you don't mind, unless any, unless any chairman wants to do some sort of wrap-up.
Yeah, just, just make a comment to Jared. I'm glad that you used Whitehall as the standard because that's what the public is using as a standard as well, and they're saying, we want the same thing, so I appreciate you using it. Thank you.
There are major initiatives that we will be evaluating, of course, during the budget process that we will ask you all to be given a direction on. There are some additional initiatives that I will have as the county administrator that hopefully will not cost anything that I would like for you all to consider, and those three things will be to continue to flatten our organizational chart because we still have a lot of pressure on some of our ACA positions, so we'll be looking at doing that without increasing the personnel budget in some way, and I have an idea of how to do that, and I'm working on that. The second thing is, is that we will be adding some additional employee programs for our existing workforce through our HR department this year. One of those is to create what I'm calling an employee shadowing program where we have folks that have degrees in certain areas, but they would not, they do not work in those departments currently, so we're going to create a program that will allow employees to work with their department head and department heads in other divisions for them to work in those departments for a period of two or three weeks to try out jobs in those locations. Also, I'm going to be considering re-implementing the educational assistance program for any employees that work here that want to further their degrees that's related to that, and make sure we beef that up so that it has wide applicability. We've done it before, but I don't think it was anything that really employees could utilize, so I'll be looking at doing that. We continue to work on the ferry situation, and we're going to continue to do that, and we'll be probably having that discussion as a part of the budget on how to resolve that issue to the Fusky Island. And then finally, I will probably be bringing a proposal to you all on doing something with our recreation divisions, active parks, passive parks, and some other things related to the boat landings that you just heard, and other necessary issues so that we can make sure that as we're giving out ATAX money, we have maximum control of that, and we're using it, making sure that money is used as effectively and efficiently as possible. I'm still not happy with the way all of that is taking place right now. I think we don't have enough oversight, we don't have enough control over that, we don't have that process pinned down as much as I would like to, so I'm going to be doing that as a part of the budget as well. So I know today was long and tiring and a lot of stuff, big-ticket items. I appreciate you all's patience over the last two and a half days. Thank you all very much for your attention and your feedback. Staff, as you can probably tell, work very hard on all of their segments, and I'm eternally grateful to them. I enjoy working with them every day, and I hope you all have been able to see why over the last three, two and a half days, as to why I enjoy working with them. We have a lot of talent here, and we're going to need to continue to develop that, grow that, and make sure that we are continuing while we're working on that talent to also work on our diversity piece, which is another thing that I'll be recommending to you all with the budget as well, hiring a recruiter and a diversity specialist for our HR department so that we can make sure we're out in colleges, tech schools, and things like that promoting the great aspects of working at Beaufort County to, as Scott Marshall said, become the premier place of employment for local governments. So anyway, that's it. Unless anybody has any questions or comments for me.
Any other comments?
Great place to live, work, and play.
And I, Mr. Greenway, I just want to commend you and your staff and your presentation today. I think, you know, ever since you started, you started highlighting your staff from day one, and you continue to do that even in this presentation today, and it just shows me, and I think all of us, that we've got an excellent team here, and we've got a team that want to get things done, and, you know, it kind of tells me that I got to make sure that I keep them going by improving and moving forward with the things that they bring to us and stuff. Stephanie, when the passive park, I've learned that if she asks for something, I might as well give it to her because she's going to, she's consistent, she's going to ask until she gets it. So when she asks for the first time, I'm just going to give it to her because, you know, but I, I just want to commend you on, on your presentation and your staff at this time, man.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
My final comment is, in the last two and a half days, one of the things that you have done that has been commendable, once a month, you bring to us and highlight people who are employed in Beaufort County. The last two and a half days, we have seen the quality and integrity and honesty and forthrightness of your staff to tell us exactly what we need to hear to make this a better place to live, work, and play. So that everyone in this room and the people who were here for the last couple of days, I commend you for what you do. Thank you.
And if you guys will indulge me for two and a half more minutes, can you pull up that last video for me? We're going to close out with this, and I'll be done. Lunch is for you, though, all of you that are here in this room, lunch is in the small conference room. We brought in a food truck today. Sarah brought in a food truck today to feed us. We've made that available for the county employees to be able to go out and purchase their lunch here as well, so we're continuing on with that local business flavor, so hope the food's good. It's good. Blame Sarah if it's not, you can blame me. The coroner video, please. Sorry. This is one final staff. The coroner was the only elected official that took advantage of our offer to do a video, so I would like to finish up with that if, if you guys will indulge me for about three more minutes.
Good retreat, Joe.
I think we did fantastic.
Hello, I'm David, I'm Beaufort County coroner. Talked a little bit about some of the things that happened this year since I've taken office. One of my biggest concerns was the 64 cremation remains that we've held and find a proper burial or footrest in place for them. To begin with, out of the 64, we have been able to locate possibly 29 to 30 families that we have returned the unknowns to through the new technology that we have available to us. Four of them will be placed at Beaufort National Cemetery through medical records we obtained. 29 remaining, remains that we have through the county, a purchase of a crypt at Forest Lodge Cemetery, which is Anderson's funeral home. We obtained that. We estimate that, that trip alone, we're serviced Beaufort County for the next 150 years. Each remain will go in there with proper identification as far as what numbers, et cetera, et cetera. And if we ever discover a new family, we can go back in and retrieve that remain a lot easier than we can, say, digging up a gravesite. a lot easier than we can, say, digging up, uh, a grave site. Um, we have applied for accreditation for Beaufort County Coroner's Office. We are looking forward to hearing back from that, uh, in the next few days, uh, in October 1st and November. That will pay 100% of accreditation. I've already had an accreditation officer that comes aboard, uh, part-time that will aid us with it. So, we're looking forward to that. Uh, we have made a lot of changes in the paperwork at the coroner's office. Uh, of course, we all know that the ink prices in these machines have skyrocketed. We got a lot of duplicate paperwork from the funeral homes and places, hospice, for instance, and I was able to cut out probably 90% of that. So, that is a big savings to Beaufort County. Uh, some of the things I'm looking at next year, I definitely think that the increase in calls that we have, a, I would like to look at possibly having another deputy coroner coming aboard. But my biggest thing that I'd like to see is us bringing, for instance, pathologists into Beaufort County. Uh, we have the facility already to do autopsies. We would need to staff it with a part-time pathologist. I have been talking with one who's willing to come down and work part-time for us, it looks like. And of course, we would need to supply some of the things that he needs. Uh, most of the stuff he will bring with him. That would save Beaufort County a lot of money, even if he does the autopsies at the same cost that NUSC is currently doing them. We still save the money on employees' transport, go there and care on our vehicles. And the main thing is instead of waiting five to seven days for an autopsy to be completed at NUSC, we can have it completed within one or two days. And the family really need that. Uh, last year's budget, we put in for two vehicles, uh, last minute. I was asked to cancel them, that we would get two from the county fleet, uh, rather than new vehicles. We're looking forward to that. Uh, as of right now, we have not received them. I'm not saying we're not going to receive them, but if we don't, we would definitely need to look at replacing two of the older vehicles that we have, uh, next year. Uh, I, I look forward to continue working, uh, with the coroner's office. Uh, my staff knows that there's no I in, in the coroner's office no more. It's we, we are a team. We all work together and, uh, I think you're going to see more positive things come out of this office. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, there being no further action, we are adjourned.